You are watching XS Lapeport County Channel 97. Coming up next is a January 23rd, 2024 special meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
Hey, everyone. Welcome to the special town council meeting, January 23rd, 2024. Let's please surrender the pledge of allegiance. I'll finally leave this super plac of the United States of America and adjutant's honor which stands our nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The only opening remark I have is I have an item to add to the agenda, which would be the Soil Solutions quote approval. Next up is public comments, which will be limited to three minutes. We have no public here. Any public comments on Zoom?
Are you gonna do a roll call?
Meg.
Meg, sorry.
Board members in attendance, Joy Schmidt.
Here.
Anita Remigius.
Here.
Kendra Bartlett.
Here.
Are there any council members on Zoom attending? Shannon or JD? No, there are not. Clerk, my counts, I am present.
Okay, we have a quorum.
There's room.
Any public comments on Zoom? Seeing none, we're gonna go to new business. Is by any chance Chris Gibson Zoom? Thinking might not be here till 5:30. Okay. Authorization to move forward on hiring a second deputy marshal. Chief?
Good evening. Back on your January 8th meeting, I had asked for authorization to move forward with the hiring process to fill the future vacancy for Sergeant James Schooly, who is retiring on April 10th. Since that approval last week, Deputy Marshal Jason Nagelski, 10 years of service with Long Beach Police Department, had submitted his resignation. We now have two openings to fill, and therefore I am asking the consent of the council this evening to allow me to move forward with the hiring process for a second deputy marshal for the Long Beach Police Department.
I would make that motion. Second, any discussion? Do we have to do a roll call though, since no one's on Zoom?
This is Chris. You do not.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed?
Mayor President Chris Gibson just joined the meeting on Zoom.
Okay, maybe then we could move next to the discussion of hiring a lobbyist, since Chris, Chris is on Zoom. Does anybody have any questions for Chris before we talk about this? Are you out there? Chris Gibson? Okay, we won't do that one yet.
He's just getting set up, right?
Oh, you know what? Maybe I apologize. That was Chris Collins that I seen on there.
Oh, okay.
Too many Chris's out there.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay, hold that. Okay, we will move on then to the quote approval for security camera upgrades for town hall and community center.
As part of the capital outlay for the town of Long Beach for the calendar year of 2024, we have budgeted $30,000 for security camera upgrades for the town hall, also to include air conditioning upgrades for the town hall. Therefore, before you tonight, I have a quote from A+ Data Communication. It is for the upgrade of security cameras here in the town hall and to include a few of the security cameras over at the Long Beach Community Center. On the quote, we'll see total project costs $6,335, but I would also like to add alternate one, which is an additional camera to cover the exterior of the community center, one of the areas that is not currently covered on the exterior, for an additional cost of $695. Therefore, it brings the quote to a total of $7,030. However, I would ask the council this evening to approve in a motion for not to exceed $7,500, just in case we run into any incidentals as this work is being completed. The work will be completed by the same vendor that is under contract with the public safety building that is currently under construction. Therefore, the cameras on the new facility and our current two facilities, this building and the community center, will all report to the same digital video recording unit. So, so we're using the same vendor. Just asking for authorization to sign the quote and move ahead with the work.
And we have money for this budgeted something?
Out of capital outlay, there's a $30,000 budget for it this year, and this will be the second expenditure coming out of that $30,000. Your last meeting, I believe you approved roughly around $6,800, and then this $7,500 will be in addition to that. So we'll be well within the $30,000 that's budgeted.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we need to set a date for an additional special council meeting. I think we did that through email, which will be this Friday.
1:00 P.M.
We're beginning to hire a new marshal.
Correct. This Friday at 1:00 P.M. I am hopeful to present to you an applicant for hire for a deputy marshal position, and I will also have the fringe benefits and salary package available for you at that meeting for discussion and approval.
I also think it's important that people understand, the chief said that every, the urgency of having a special meeting, he mentioned that every day that we don't have the position filled, it's costing the town approximately $500 to $550 a day to cover those shifts. So I think it's important that if residents question the urgency of it, that they, you know, that that's a real reason. And I think you said that if this person is hired, conceivably they can start a week, two weeks from Monday for training. So that's, that's a lot of money. And I know that people just step up and fill in, but that's taxing on our officers. So much appreciate the due diligence and finding good candidates.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments, and that is correct. And as soon as we could hire the individual, it'll be February 12th, because they are currently a law enforcement officer with another department, and they would have to give a minimum of two-week notice. Therefore, that's why I'm asking for the special meeting in advance of your February 12th meeting. But thank you.
Okay, Soil Solutions for approval, Chief?
In recent days, I had shared with you an estimate from Soil Solutions for $7,380. This is for the septic design for the public safety building to include site plans, photography survey, and permits and filing fees. Soil Solutions is a civil engineer. They also conducted our soil samplings last fall that were submitted with our pre-application. The previous council in 2023 in the fall had approved a not-to-exceed budget, I believe it was $10,000 at the time. This number comes in under the $10,000. Tonight, I wanted to present this to you just for transparency to the community, to let them know that the state of Indiana Health Department has moved us to the next stage in the application process for sanitary septic needs for the new public safety building. I have personally spoke to John McQuestion, the owner of Soil Solutions, and that was yesterday. John has assured me that once we sign the quote that is before us tonight, they will begin the work. It will take them approximately four to six weeks to complete their work. We are then obligated to return through Soil Solutions. They will submit everything back to the state of Indiana, and then there'll be somewhat of a delay waiting for the state to then issue us our final septic permit. At that time, we would then have to find a contractor to come in and complete the necessary work, to make any modifications to the current septic system here at the town hall, complete the septic work as designed by Soil Solutions. So therefore, we would have the sanitary septic needs of the public safety building addressed. In review of the documents received from the state of Indiana, it appears we can do a combined system, that being the town hall and the public safety building combined, or we have the options of making some modifications to address the sanitary septic needs of the public safety building through the work that Mr. McQuestion through Soil Solutions will be doing. He will keep us fully informed throughout the process. One of the changes I do know is we will need a larger septic tank. Currently, we have a 1,000 gallon tank. We need a holding capacity of 2,500 gallons. So therefore, we either have to add an additional tank or change out the current. So those are some of the things that we'll be working on throughout this process. So as I started this evening's conversation, this work has been previously approved by the previous council. However, I would ask the council tonight to allow me authorization to sign this agreement, allowing us to move forward with the work for $7,380. On the quote, we will see also there's a 50% retainer that's required for them to proceed with the, the work. And therefore, I would ask that you direct Clerk Collins to submit for payment 50% of the estimated amount, and I would execute the contract tomorrow and get it returned and send a copy to everybody.
Does that mean there's just not gonna be another Presby Mall across the street?
There will be. More than likely will be. Though, that's the decision on alternate dosing is what they call, that we would dose in between one field to the other field. Those are some of the, the, once the survey site work is done, and I will have a better idea. More than likely, everything indicates that we need to add another system. I just don't know the capacity yet. That's what they're working on. So if it'll be same size, a little bit smaller, or a little bit larger, that's what we're working on.
So their main task is to decide whose lines, the bonds to this, but their main task is to decide if we need to go with a combined system or line by the permit? Or that just a little piece of the puzzle?
That's a little piece of the puzzle. The state has given us the guidelines, the requirements, and so Soil Solutions will then work with the state to fulfill the requirements as outlined by the state. So we've been given the capacity. Now we've got to figure out what we need to build across the street to make the system work for both buildings. So, but I am very hopeful moving forward. This is good news that we're moving to the next step. So very happy with that.
So since this was already approved by the previous council, we, do we need a motion? We need a motion to reaffirm this?
I would just ask authorizing myself to sign the agreement with Soil Solutions to move forward with the work and submit 50% payment to allow the work to begin.
I'll make that motion. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Chris, there you are. No. We moved through the meeting. I confirmed it with him, but when, you know, we had announced so many different meetings, and it ultimately got to be, okay, I told Chris 5:30 because we had a second session. So.
Here's his trying to sign in right now. Just waiting for him to sign in.
Kendra, you know more about this than I do, sure, because you've been down there. So the legislative session bills keep coming home throughout the whole legislative session?
To my understanding, but I would confirm that. It seems like, I mean, I would, I don't know, maybe there's, it seems like there'd be some sort of schedule to win it would stop, because.
I think there's a deadline.
Yeah. They seem to come up all the time randomly, surprise times, like I don't know where, hidden in another bill about something else.
Has everybody had a chance to go over there, reading?
Yeah, I'm just doing it in front of the camera.
Here we go. All right, Chris should be joining us. Chris Gibson, are you with us? Chris, good evening. Are you with us?
Still connecting to audio, Mark.
Okay, yeah, I see. It just popped up on the screen. Go ahead, Joy.
Hi, Chris. Welcome.
Hey, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Sorry for the miscommunication. I thought this was at 6:30 Eastern. Sorry.
It, it was. It's not you. It was us.
No worries.
So, yeah, we apologize. The one question I had was, so do bills keep coming out throughout the whole session? So like until April, bills can just keep coming out?
No, bills cannot keep coming up. We've passed the deadlines. The first, the deadlines for bills to be introduced happened the very first week of session. So the week of January, I think they were January 9th and 11th, something like that, in the House and Senate. Don't hold me to that, but it was that first week of session. However, amendments can happen at any time and do on a daily basis. So, you know, an amendment to a bill that could impact Long Beach could happen on any given day in any committee, could happen, you know, on the House floor, could happen on the Senate floor. I mean, as we've seen over the last five years that I've represented the town, you know, much of the language we've had to contend with, you know, was not necessarily in an introduced bill. It was in a, in an amendment. And certainly, you know, when we dealt with, you know, public trust issues on, you know, the, the beach front, you know, we certainly dealt with iteration after iteration of amendments that happened throughout the legislative process. And, you know, so we're, you know, I like, I always like to tell clients, we're not safe until the legislature goes home. So, you know, they can, they certainly have many ways that they can impact, you know, local municipalities.
Okay, thank you very much. Understood. I've got over the contract, and I think everyone else has. I, we haven't had a discussion about it yet, but my personal opinion, and I made this, you know, very public when I ran for office, was that we should retain Chris's services. I, I know maybe Larry and somebody, maybe Chris Willby, it's maybe not necessary for these bills we talked about, but I think every town should have a lobbyist. I think they're silly not to. So any other comments?
I'll just second that. I agree, because, you know, although possibly you could find another way when the bill comes up to, to government or fight it or whatever, it's knowing about it, which is half the battle. And we would not have known about this. And we worked with AIM and stuff. We did not know about these two bills that would affect Long Beach if it wouldn't be for Chris looking out for us. So I absolutely agree. I think we need a lobbyist always in our corner, looking for the town's best interest and just keeping us informed of what's going on. And best case scenario, they don't affect us or, you know, but knowing about it is more than half the battle for sure.
Yeah, and I agree. They don't affect us. That's a good thing.
Anita? Just my only comment is I think that same as Joy and Kendra, we've all spoken out over the years in favor of retaining you, Chris, and your company, and appreciate what you do and just helping us protect the town from whatever it needs to be protected from and, and, and keeping not just access to our beach, but just, just doing what you do. You've shown over the years that you do that very well. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate the vote of confidence. And I, and let me say by, you know, start by saying that, you know, I, I definitely am not in the business of, you know, wasting client resources or, you know, you know, I've not gotten to where I'm at professionally by, you know, you know, misleading or, you know, you know, indicating, you know, playing chicken little, so to speak, I guess, maybe what best way to put it with, with legislation. I, so, you know, you know, if 1329 and Senator Paul's bill, and I'm looking for the number right now, Senate Bill 253, you know, don't impact the, the town, that's great. But to the larger point, Joy, I think, you know, we've seen over the years that there has been need for legislation, or need for a lobbyist rather, to address legislation, you know, at the State House, you know, on a fairly annual basis. So, you know, I, I, but I did want to say for the record, I'm completely fine if the, you know, if the, the will of the council is to, you know, save some resources this session and not retain our firm. But I, I, I do see, see value in having firms like ours kind of bird dogging and watching issues on an annual basis for you down in Indianapolis.
I just had a quick question about the, it's the last page, Chris. It talks about fees, registration fees with the Indiana Lobby Registration Commission.
Yes.
So I'm not sure. It says that we're responsible for that, that you'll help us through the process. Is there a process? Just we have, we do have a new clerk treasurer. I'm not sure what that, what it involves, the process of registration.
Yeah, so we, yes, we do walk you through that, and we've registered on behalf of the town for, again, the last five years, and we do so again this year. Our contract, you know, a lot of our contracts, especially with our clients that are, you know, perennial clients that retain us year after year, it's just an ongoing registration that we don't terminate after the legislative session. But because of the, by the nature of our session-only contracts with Long Beach over the last five years, we have historically terminated our registration after the legislative session is over. We terminate your registration, and then, you know, we renew it each year as needed. And it, you know, so should you decide to retain our firm again, we would walk you through that process, reinstate your registration with the Indiana Lobby Registration Commission. You know, we would add you as a client on our registration. But yes, our firm walks all our clients through that. And, you know, there is a, I think it's a $215 registration fee. You know, it's, it's roughly, it's a couple hundred dollars, somewhere in that range. So that the town would pay to register with the lobby commission. So, but we're required to register with the Indiana Lobby Registration Commission. Anytime we're compensated $500 or more in a calendar year to lobby, that's the threshold in Indiana that's, that requires registration.
So who would you work with on that? Or who from your office? I'm not sure if it's the council, it's a council member, or if it is the clerk treasurer. We'd like to kind of kick things off for you.
We can, that can be your designee. You know, it would be Amelia McClure, who's a vice president of our firm. She also is an attorney and operates as kind of our compliance officer internally for our clients. She would work with whoever your designee is. Historically, that had been Dr. Lemay as president of the council, but it doesn't have to be. It just needs to be somebody that has the authority to sign an MOU on behalf of the town of Long Beach with the lobby commission, you know, and, and that person is going to have to file two activity reports. Again, we'll walk you through that, but there are activity reports due in May, and then again in November. That basically, it's, it's a way to be transparent with the public as to what you're spending on lobbying fees with our firm. And so we have to report to the commission our activity every six months. So, but again, we would walk whoever your designee is through that.
Thank you. And then the other thing is I saw that there are installments that are due, and they start January, February, March, April, and we're already near the end of January. I'm not sure if we can get a check out, if we approve this. I'm just.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not concerned about the timing of the, of the payments. It, the, the amount that is in the contract has been the same amount all five years. We've done, we've done the same amount of $25,000, you know, in short sessions, long sessions. It's not really reflective of a billable hour. It's just a flat fee of, of $25,000. Are the installments of four, four installments of $6,250 each really are a convenience matter for the, the town. You know, we're, we're open to whatever payment structure is easiest for you. But, you know, and I will say, even though, you know, we technically are only representing the town during the legislative session, you know, historically, that's been kind of the arrangement, you know. Certainly, you know, if the council needs me to engage on something outside of the legislative session within reason, I'm certainly open to that, you know. Certainly, we'll make myself available outside of, you know, the next few months on, on behalf of the council if there's something that, that makes sense for our firm to engage on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would make a motion that we retain Chris's firm and sign this contract for year 2024.
And authorize Meg to issue more installment funds for installment payments.
Joy, this is Chris Willoughby. I would suggest that that motion includes also giving you further authorization to execute documents as described by Chris Gibson in the future as, for instance, the registration documents.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and if it's, and if the council's more comfortable, as far as the payments being perspective, I can send a revised contract that says February, March, April, and May for payment as opposed to, you know, obligating the council to, you know, something that's already passed. Yeah, I think that's just, that's cleanest anyway. Yeah, I think that's probably, I agree, Chris.
Okay, that sounds good.
And I can find out if we budgeted for this or not. I don't know that answer tonight.
If we didn't, we can follow the money somewhere?
I.
You'll be able to find that in services, but.
I'm sorry. Hold on, Chris.
You'll be able to find that in budgeted services, but what you can make it also subject to Meg confirming that there's already funds available. That way you're not, you're entering, entering in contract where you don't have appropriate funds. So that'll cover that contingency.
Okay. So I would make the motion that we approve this contract, that Meg is going to make sure we have the funds, and that Chris Willoughby is going to review the documents as they come in. Is there anything else I have to add to that?
That you would execute any registration documents?
Oh, yes.
You will execute the registration documents?
And while the president, authorizations, sign any of the related documents.
Yep.
Yes, authorizing myself, sign the documents and the subsequent documents. Second, any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And I would just say, I, first of all, thank you for your continued confidence in our firm. Appreciate, you know, the continued relationship. I, I, before we move on and while I've got the council, I did, did want to just say that 1329 that, you know, was heard in committee this morning and did pass out, I believe it was a vote of eight to three. I will send the council, and I, you know, I don't know, historically, you know, I don't know if there's a point person on council that would like, you know, these, our legislative updates and things of that nature. You know, we can kind of work off, work the cadence out offline. So, but I will send, 1329 did get revised a little bit. There were amendments in committee. I don't think they were significant as far as Long Beach is concerned, but I will, I will send an updated version of the bill so we can keep track of that. But just so I'm 100% clear, at this point, Long Beach. But just so I'm 100% clear, at this point, Long Beach is not engaging on 1329, Representative Pressl's bill as, at this point.
That's, that is correct.
That's helpful.
Who do you want to be the point person? Would that be chief to get copies of it? And you, or chief and Kendra? Chief, do you care? Chief and Chris? I mean, how do we, you just said someone should be a point person, so you could send out legislative updates?
I think it makes sense to have them go to Joy and they can come to me as well or anyone else. But not that they can't come to you, but they definitely should, Joy's the one that has signed.
If they come to me and then I'll just send them to the rest of the council.
Okay, that, that, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, I think you're free to go. Have a good night.
All right, we'll talk soon. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye.
Okay, do we have any council comments? Nope. Motion to adjourn.
I mean, second, that was your motion to adjourn. Kendra, second.
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Thank you, everyone.
Say goodnight.